Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the School District of the City of Dearborn, January 14th, 2019. Can we have the first item, please?
Roll call: Hussein Barry.
Here.
Fadwa Hamud here. Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Chair Mary Petlicov.
Here.
And James Thorpe.
Here.
Just to set the record straight here, because if you're looking on for the first time in January here, I'd like to welcome everybody to the new year. And also, you will see a little bit of a variation of seating arrangements here up at the Board, because just before this meeting, we did have our organizational meeting, which we have to have annually, and we have all assumed new roles as Board members in a rotation process. So I want to welcome everybody to January 2019. Next item, please.
Next item is Ms. Linda Lazar, Principal of Howard Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
So it's fitting that the students got to watch some oaths today, as you've all, I believe, been invited to watch them take their oaths in a couple week, a couple of the students here. I'd like to introduce to you our students today, who are here representing not only Howard, but their student leadership organizations in the school. Isabella Sala, 5th grader, our future Student Council President. She's here also representing Stan Chess Club and Instrumental. Jason Anderson, 5th grader as well, representing Newspaper Club, Band, City Beautiful, Green School, and Chess Club. And Hussein Fayad, who is one of our Student Council Senators. He's also Student of the Week and a model of PBIS expectations at the school.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. You want to come up here for a minute? All right. Thank you, students. That wonderful job. Next item.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
All right, so I want to start, as we do every month, with retirements. We have a couple this month. Lola Okanawowski from Maples, over 18 years of service. And Peter Sapienza with over 18 years of service from Dearborn. If we can acknowledge them, show our appreciation, and congratulate them on their retirement, please. And I will be sending a card to them to congratulate them. All right, next thing on agenda, we have an item. I'm going to ask Mr. Grzinski to come up, and I think Mr. Thorpe, you wanted, trustee Thorpe, you wanted to comment on this, that we have a plan for phasing in some air conditioning on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll hear more about it later, but it's very, hopefully it'll be comforting in June to hear that the air conditioning is starting to move into the buildings. And I want to thank the district, Mr. Grzinski and everyone else, for putting this at the front of the line, so to speak, to make sure this is going to be available for the kids come those warm months that are coming. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. President Petlicov. Yes, we will have those ready to go this spring. The Board approved the equipment purchase for the upgrade air condition, about eight schools. The equipment's sitting in our warehouse, ready to be installed. The roofers are out now, setting the roof supports for the systems. They'll be going in. We look to have some dry weather, so we're going to keep working through the winter. And those will be ready to go. We'll be working on the design of the middle school media centers over the next couple weeks. Additionally, the Salina air conditioning project is going. We've completed the LED upgrade right now to free up the electricity for the air conditioning system, and we're going through punch list right now. The equipment's on order. The contracts have been generated, and we're just waiting to move forward with the equipment.
Good news. I'm sure everybody will be thankful.
Thanks. Sure.
Okay, non-agenda items?
So just mention, I know trustee McDonald has some family here, and I don't know if he wanted to introduce them. I know we heard from some of trustee Thorpe's, but you had wanted to mention it.
I would appreciate it. Thank you, Superintendent Maliko. My husband is here, so I wanted to thank him for coming. He's always been a terrific support for me, as are my parents. Both my mom and dad are here, and my dad will be celebrating his 80th birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
So happy birthday, and then congratulations to trustee McDonald, trustee Thorpe, trustee Lane was last, a couple months ago. And then I want to congratulate all the Board on their new officer and other positions through the organization. So congratulations, all.
Thank you.
I'm going to call up Ms. Pam Miller, just to briefly address the Board. She was approved in December at the Board meeting, but she had job responsibilities at her former district, and we're really excited to have her as the Director of Payrolls and Benefits. She just started today, so her first day.
Yay, first day, and I made it through. I'm still standing. Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I grew up in Dearborn, went through the schools, graduated from Etzel Ford, so it feels good to be back home. So I look forward to getting to know each of you, and I'll do my best.
Well, we hope you have a long and happy career here.
Thank you, I do too. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And I have some other, I have a few things on this list for my commentary. I have some other good news. We'll spend, send out more details, but I'll just keep it brief right now. Again, the Mackinac Center has our high schools ranked at the tops. It just came out, 2018. As far as operations, all of them are in the top 100, but you have several that are in the top 25, and then actually, Ford's in number one for overall, how the high schools run. So this will be shared with the Board, yes. I won't get into all the ratings, but we will be sharing that online, and the Board will be getting a report, but it is public record right now, and so we'll pump that out. So congratulations to everyone in the school district.
It was actually in an op ed in the Sunday newspaper as well.
So very positive as all the different ratings and things come in. I want to mention, too, the Martin Luther King Day, the students decided this year to do a service project rather than a march. It was something they led through my council, and so there will be service projects going on, I think between 10 and 2 o'clock, and a lot of it's going to be based out of the performing arts. But I talked to the mayor, and he was very excited. And it was great that we got the, you know, the real Dearborn march going the last few years, but now this is student-led, so they're taking the initiative, so I just wanted to mention that. I have a few more going down the list. I want to congratulate and thank, and if she can stand, I know she doesn't like attention, but Chris Cipperly, the President of the Dearborn Federation of Teachers. I saw her. I want to, she is, she's in the back there. She is, she 11, I believe it's 11 years of service as the President. She's stepping down in the next few days, I believe, to move on to other things. And again, she's committed a lot of time. She's done a lot of good over the years. I can speak to my time as a principal, speak to my time at HR, and then as superintendent. And again, sometimes, you know, we disagree in things, but we always have the students at heart, and I think what happens is, in our district in Dearborn, is we show the model for how we work together collaboratively. And to, thank you for her leadership, and then leading with the different union heads. And I know that's the Board of Education's philosophy, that's my philosophy, and we're actually going to be presenting at the State Superintendent Conference on this model of collaboration with our employee group. So thank you, Chris, and congratulations, and we'll make sure we stay in touch. I know you're not going anywhere. I'm going to ask Ms. Ali Bazey just to come up and just briefly outline what the, the HR had presented on due process discipline, Title IX, lots of things last year, you might recall, but she's just going to briefly outline, just to remind, always, always a good reminder for employees and public when people have complaints, and what our process is. We have officers that are part of, the compliance officers that are required by federal law, and so she's going to mention that.
So, good evening. A few months ago, Board meetings ago, we presented an entire Human Resources presentation about several different things, including Title IX, harassment complaints, investigations, due process. So I'll just briefly go over complaints and investigations and what that process is. When we, when Human Resources receives a complaint, we conduct an investigation, ensuring that all parties receive due process, which is their opportunity to present all the information. It's essential that the complaint includes all pertinent information in order for Human Resources to conduct a thorough and complete investigation. At times, complaints are received anonymously or with minimal information, which makes it nearly impossible to conduct an adequate investigation. So HR will always request more information as, as we see fit, as needed to move forward in any investigation. It's really important to note that the district has five compliance officers, and the role of the compliance officer is to ensure that our, internally, that our policies and our guidelines are being followed. The five compliance officers for the district include Ms. Ruth Bankhead in Human Resources, Mr. Amy Schur in Student Services, Mr. Rob Cedarlin in Human Resources, and myself, Mason Ali Bazey, also in Human Resources, Executive Director. So if there was ever a complaint from anyone, we would ask that they called 313-827-3000, and select Human Resources to reach Ruth, Rob, or myself, or you can select Student Services to receive access to Mr. Schur as well. All of our email contact information is also at the district homepage, www dearbornschools.org, and all the information regarding the details and the guidelines for investigations in depth details are also included on the Human Resources blog. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
I'm going to keep rolling. Thank you, Ms. Ali Bazey. I'm going to have Dr. Chokel come up, keep rolling with the commentary, just to give a quick update on the Read by Third Grade Task Force.
Good evening. The Read by Third Grade Task Force is a response to Public Act 306, which specifies the expectation by the state of Michigan that every school district work according to set parameters to ensure that all students read at grade level by the time they leave third grade. The law itself, the legislation itself, is rather dense. There are lots of different parts to it, and so the district formed a task force at the request of our superintendent, and that task force met last week. Over 50 people attended, a combination of parents, community members, administrators, and teachers. After a review of the legislation, the participants divided up into work groups. Each person was allowed to select the work group that they would like to dig into more deeply, and the work of discussing the element of legislation, such as assessment, or such as reading instruction, reading intervention, began, and there will be another meeting this, later this month, on the 29th of January, from 4 to 6. So the recommendations of the task force will determine our course moving forward, meaning it is not yet decided whether or not this task force will continue on for the short term, long term. January 10th was a beginning, and once the participants have had an opportunity to reflect on the information, to consider what their recommendations or suggestions might be, we will hear those on the 29th, and then we'll determine whether or not the task force will continue meeting and looking into the, all of the issues that are represented there.
Thank you. And I'll ask you to remain up there. I'm going to ask Mr. Oak to come up as we kind of switch topics, but thank you, Dr. Chokel. So more to come, and I did go to the task force meeting to just welcome everyone. It's important work, and I've, we're going to talk a little bit more about the lame duck in a few minutes, legislature, but I just want to mention, too, because I know we have a lot of people, and there's been communication on the theater programs, and so I just want to mention that, you know, I really appreciate the dedication and hard work of the performing arts in our district. They do great work. We see great things, and even though the school, the current school accountability system doesn't really necessarily have a measure to look at that, we've always valued that in Dearborn, and they're important, and we know they are. And I've witnessed personally many performances at the high schools, top-notch. Whenever I can, I go, and we do, there's just great things, a lot of times, at the performing arts. And so I've seen very high-quality programs at all of the high schools. And then I just want to mention with the Stout Theater Program, I've, I've been to each one of those performances. They're done very well, high-quality. We also appreciate how they promote for our students going into the high school, and hopefully we can see possibly some expansion of these kind of programs into the other middle schools. I know right now, and they're going to speak to it, that they run it kind of as an enrichment, but we appreciate the work they do and the students who are here for that. And I actually went on stage in '17, I remember, with Representative Hamud and Commissioner Wroncheck to congratulate them and just thank them for their hard work. I also try to go to any of the art programs today. We have the empty bowls coming. Ms. Meyer always invites me to the choir, the district choir, and I'm happy to go and participate and be part of that, because it's just, we have such gifted students in our district. So I'll let them speak a little bit about the program and Stout.
Well, we know that extracurricular activities, all of them, are extremely important to our student success. We heard at the elementary level from our Howard students who were here, all of the different activities that they're involved in at the elementary level, and that continues throughout middle school or high school. So as a district, we're very pleased that we're able to support so many, either by having teacher sponsors or the many volunteers that we have. We have teacher volunteers, we have parent volunteers, we have community volunteers, we have student volunteers who support our students, and those activities continue to be truly a spot for our students to shine.
Okay, we're very proud of our theater program at Stout. It's been a wonderful program for students. We really appreciate kind of the community effort that has gone behind the program. So many people, both in this school and in the community, have played a part in its success. We've had theater activities ongoing last week and planned for this week as well, and we're very happy that the individuals who have been leading our theater program will continue to lead our theater program. The theater program is something that has had a positive impact on so many students, both in our school and across the district. It's a program that I believe needs to be supported moving forward, and has always been a priority of mine when we're looking at extracurricular offerings. This past afternoon, we did post an update about the Stout Theater Program. I'm sorry, direct individuals who haven't had a chance to look at that yet, to go to the Stout blog and look for that posting.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I just want, and moving along, I just want to talk a little bit about the lame duck legislature, and I know I've been updating the Board and others, and if not, you can get the updates just through the press. But, you know, there was a lot of legislation. We worked for, my, Dr. Mead and President Cavalluna, we actually went to Lansing to lobby slash advocate for our students. There were other superintendents and other educators. I know President Cavalluna has been, you know, up there advocating for the college, and it just seems that the laws that get passed through the lame duck are not the will of the people, and they're jammed through, and it goes late into the hours of 3 o'clock, and there's a lot of maneuvering going on. And I've been working with our organizations. Every organization has opposed most of, it's about the process, it's not even about the party, it's just that this is a broken system, and I personally feel that there needs to be some kind of a change to it, possibly, you know, outlawing, or having a supermajority, or maybe going to the citizens, because when you have things like the school accountability, which is changing again, and which every educational organization, it's called the ADF, here's one example, has said it's not going to be good for students, including the Michigan Department of Education and the State Superintendent, who is not supporting it. And she's actually asked for a legal opinion from the head of the state to say that this may be illegal and violating federal law. But again, they jammed it through and passed it at 3:00 AM, late in the morning, and a lot of people haven't vetted it out, so it hasn't gone through the process. I think when Read by Third Grade went through, we opposed a lot of what was in there, but there was a process, so we were able to get some different provisions that were added. This, we did not have much of an opportunity. And so I'm not confident in that system. That system has been proven faulty across the country, and again, the target is changing, and that's why we need to have this multiple measures approach, and the state of Michigan Department of Ed is saying they don't know that they can even implement what they're saying, and so it's just a big mess, and I think this is where they're not really thinking of the people, and especially the students. The other one was taking money, there's a couple, there's a lot that went, and some of it not even impacting education, just other issues. But another one is taking money out of the school aid fund to put into the roads. Now, the roads do mean money and other things, but, you know, they're saying, well, they're not going to harm the school aid fund, but we'll see when the budget comes up, as the Board knows, then we're going to have to balance the budget. So I've been very active within my groups. I've been about this and other superintendents, the Wayne County, the Tri-County Alliance, the Michigan School Boards Association, everyone opposed this. Everyone said this is not good for students, don't do it. Guess what? They did it through, and these are most of the people that are going out of office that were not elected, a lot of them that were not elected by the people. So anyway, we're going to, we're going to continue to advocate and do what's best for our students, and that's why we've worked hard to develop these relationships through Lansing. On a positive note, I want to tell you a positive, and this was something that started well before the lame duck, but trustee Lane, I think it was about a year and a half ago, approached Senator Kenezak and asked about the Open Meetings Act, and asked that we have a provision to go in a closed session to talk about safety and security, because it doesn't make sense to be in an open, talking about your tactical maneuvers on how you're protecting the school system and/or other areas. So I'm happy to say that Senator Kenezak, or then Senator Kenezak, he'd stayed in touch, and we communicated last year, and that law, I call it the Mary Lane Law. Anyway, it's, it's open, we can go in a closed session.
I don't think they named it that.
They didn't name it, but anyway, that's how I reference it with Senator Kenezak, because he always sent me the texts and said, "The Mary Lane," you know, anyway. So she took initiative, and I guess that just shows you, picking up the phone call, calling a legislature, and doing, it does impact, and you did it. It had an impact, he went, and he went through, and so it does have an impact, and that's why I continue to do that, and that's why I will continue to advocate for our students. And we welcome account, when we talk about accountability and things, we welcome it. We actually, Advanced Ed, all the things that we do, we welcome it, but we also want to know what the target is, and we want to have a system that is going to help our students in the ADF or not. So thank you, trustee Lane.
I'd just like to take on to that comment that Dr. Chokel's just talked about the Read by Third Grade. I mean, I would challenge if there's anybody in this room that doesn't want every one of our students to be able to read at, at grade level. We want that, and we don't oppose measures to.
Correct.
Right. I mean, we, we want students to be able to show what they can do. The problem is that when the measure changes all the time, and this has gone on for at least 25 years, the tests have changed, what they're measuring, the accountability system, it's changed and changed, and that has real impact in dollars. It means that our teachers, our administrators, all of us have to become used to a new system. We have to use new naming. Dr. Chokel just mentioned a new, is it a text or something, that they changed the name of? Everybody, it's not a small thing to change a giant system. It costs money, it costs time, and we lose then in our, in our test scores. So it has a real impact. This current one that they passed, the A to F, everybody has opposed it, and we need to continue to oppose things like that. It's, it's not for the best interest of education or students. It was for some kind of political favor. I don't know what it is, but there was no reason to change it, and it may not even be constitutional. So it really has serious effects, and that's why we bring it up.
And that's all I have for my commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, recognition and acknowledgements. We have empty bowls.
And Ms. Susan Briggs, I believe, is here. Every year they come up, and some of, I went to the empty bowls and was a part of it. It's always a very positive program for the art department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy School Board Appreciation Month. I'm Susan Briggs, Dearborn Schools Art Resource Teachers, and some of my fellow art teachers are here, and I'd like them to introduce themselves.
I'm Suzie Thomas.
Joanne Sucker. Oh, sorry.
Suzie Thomas, Howard Elementary Art Teacher.
Nicole Raynard, Bryant Middle School.
Nanet Sad, Miller Elementary and Maples Elementary.
Paige Bruce, Gear Park Elementary.
Liz Donahue, Etzel Ford High School.
Before I talk about empty bowls, I want to tell you about this past Friday, kindergarten through 12th art teachers and select high school students had an art show opening at Dearborn's new Black Box Gallery, and over 400 people came to the opening. It was great. There's an artist talk back this event this Saturday, January 19th, at 1 o'clock, and the show is up through January 26th. I hope everyone can go see it. The art department's 27th annual Empty Bowls event was held on November 19th at Park Place Banquet Hall. Empty Bowls was started in 1990 by an Etzel Ford High School alumni and now retired art teacher, John Hardum, and his wife Lisa Blackburn. The Service Learning Project showed that art can really make a difference. Clay bowls were created in Mr. Hardum's ceramics class, and students invited family and friends to enjoy a simple meal of soup and bread, and a $5 donation was suggested. At the end of the meal, the guests each chose an empty bowl to take home as a reminder of the hunger issues in our world, and the money was donated to help feed people in the community. The next year, now-retired art teachers Wendy Sample and Audrey Wilkins started Dearborn Schools Art Department's Empty Bowls, and we've been holding them ever since. They still cost $5, too. This year, we raised $3,600 from donations at the door and from tin can raffles. Proceeds were given to Gleaner's Food Bank and Dearborn's Chapter of Blessings in a Backpack. I would like to personally thank everyone who came to the event, Wendy Sample and other volunteers, and participating art teachers and students for making this event a huge success. Donations were made by Park Place, Starbucks, Blick Art Supply, Satva Yoga, Detroit Institute of Arts, Metawi Tiles, and Roven Ceramics. Star Bakery of Oak Park baked the artisan bread, I'm sorry, baked the artisan bread especially for this event. Empty Bowls, which began here in Michigan and by a Dearborn Public Schools graduate, now has events that take place in every state in America and in 22 countries to help feed the hungry. The art department has given the school board, Dr. Maliko, executive directors, a bowl made by Hague, third-grade students with their art teacher, Rainy Munting, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you and for your continued support of Dearborn Schools Art Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, please. Commendations, and I believe we have commendations today being read by Magnet School students, sophomore Sarah Rios, and junior Adriana Zick.
It's only me reading today, so.
Which student are you?
Oh, Sarah Rios.
Okay, thank you.
Commendations to the Dearborn and Etzel Ford High School students who participated in the 2018 Michigan High School State Despian Festival. Dearborn High honorees include state medalists in superior ratings given to Katherine Garber in Dance, Adriana Viscomi, music theater solo performance, Adriana Viscomi, Olivia Kirk and Olivia Thibodeau for the musical theater group, and Noah Goddard and Caleb Reese in the musical theater duet. Certificates of excellence were awarded to Andrew Blakenship and Tristan Nunez in acting duet performance, Sarah McDowell and Mayling Marzone for monologue performance, Tristan Nunez, Tian Paco, and Olivia Kirk for group acting scene, and Lily Grumel for musical theater solo performance. For Etzel Ford High School, Excellence Award were given to Nora Heaton for solo musical theater and Nate Herman in monologue. Superiors were earned by Katherine and Elizabeth Dix in group. Dearborn High honorees include state medalists in superior ratings given to Katherine Garber in Dance, Adriana Viscomi, music theater solo performance, Adriana Viscomi, Olivia Kirk and Olivia Thibodeau for the musical theater group, and Noah Goddard and Caleb Reese in the musical theater duet. Certificates of excellence were awarded to Andrew Blakenhip and Tristan Nunez in acting duet performance, Sarah McDowell and Mei Ling Marzoni for monologue performance, Tristan Nunez, Tian Paco and Olivia Kirk for group acting scene, and Lily Grumel for musical theater solo performance. For Etzel Ford High School, excellence award were given to Nora Heaton for solo musical theater and Nate Herman in monologue. Superiors were earned by Katherine and Elizabeth Dix in group dance, Oscar Vasquez in solo musical theater, and Nathan Walton's sound design. Special thanks to teachers Greg Viscomi, Dearborn High, and Robert Doyle, Etzel Ford, for their continued efforts with these students and the theater programs they oversee. Commendations to the Forts and Key Club. Before the break, students visited residents at the Heartland Nursing Home and also packed food at Gleaner's to be distributed to those in need in the metropolitan area. For elementary schools, I don't know, I was gonna say that. Commendations to the staff, students, and parents at Henry Ford Elementary for their efforts to collect $1,100 that will be donated to the Yemen Children fundraiser effort. The funds will help provide needed items for the children in Yemen. Commendations to the Lowry School community for their efforts to raise more than $8,600 for children in Yemen. The funds were used to purchase three pallets of baby formula in addition to donating two boxes of formula and medicine.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Next.
All right, so this is my opportunity to thank Dr. Mead for his service for the year as board president, and you saw the shift. We really appreciate your outstanding work as board president of the P-12 and the college. As those of you who know Dr. Mead, he's an academic, and he's been an inspiration for the strategic plan especially, and for my team, because often get a positive email or a positive response that I can share with my team, which is nice to get, you know, you get the positive once in a while, and you can share, and it is motivating. He's also been an advocate, as I mentioned. Anytime there's something on a state or national, especially political, he's involved, and he's been with me to Lansing, I think sometimes twice a year to advocate for our students, and this last time we got to go with President Cavalluna, you know, his, I know the college, he's got that experience there in the college, but I would say that he's also helped to bridge maybe that partnership as, you know, supporting the rest of the trustees as well, the importance of the, of the partnership. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Mead for his leadership, because when you take on that board president role, there is an extra, and we're already talking today and over the weekend, and it is more of a dedication and time and that is involved, and so I just want to say thank you, Dr. Mead. We appreciate, on behalf of the school district administration, everyone, thank you for your time and dedication, and we... You're welcome. Thank you. Present you with this gavel.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Picture that, even with her going. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Just remember, you don't get to pound it tonight.
Yeah, keep that one. Ceremonial.
Adjourn, adjourn.
Next, please. Congratulations, Dr. Mead.
Thank you.
Board appreciation.
So, January, oh, Tom's jumping. January is School Board Appreciation Month, as I heard, I think Ms. Briggs or someone had mentioned. So on behalf of our students, staff, and community, I want to thank the board trustees for their enduring dedication to public education. As superintendent, I truly appreciate the diversity of experience and professionalism this group of trustees brings to the table. They're very knowledgeable about the workings of our district and the latest issues impacting education, as we've been talking about throughout this meeting and beyond. I've enjoyed working with them the past four years as superintendent, but many of you, I've known you much longer than that in different roles in the district with our history. Several important projects have included early childhood, teacher home visit, leadership during contract negotiations. We had five contracts that went through this year, and when we mentioned Chris Cipperley, you know, we, most of the favorable voting on that was like a 98% by membership, which has been unheard of, so, you know, the board has been there guiding and providing leadership in those areas. Capacity, we had a tough year with dealing with capacity issues, and we're still addressing that as we're looking for a potential bond, so that was extra meetings, extra time, extra community forums, you know, commitment. You've been committed to accountability and measurable goals. That is in my goals. We had board study session last Thursday, so even though everyone's used to this meeting every, you know, once a month, and then at the college, we still have other meetings that go on and committee meetings. And so, you know, in addition to not only the 21,000 students we have, almost 2,800 employees, you have the Henry Ford College. Nor the board has double duty. You have to stay on top of board information, board briefs. It's a tremendous amount of commitment. That means just, you know, twice the dedication to the job as people from across the state. You evaluate the superintendent, you evaluate the college president, and you hold us accountable with our goals that are aligned with our strategic plan, and we both have strategic plans coming up for renewal, so busy, busy again. I want to mention Trustee Thorpe. He's served for over two years now. Trustee Roxanne McDonald, and we have an interesting thing, because we have several trustees that have been on the board and come back, I think four actually. Trustee McDonald with over five years. Trustee Lane with over 17 years of service. Trustee Hussein Berry with over seven years. Trustee Hamud with almost four years. Trustee Mead with over four years. Trustee Mary Petlicoff with over eight years. And so many people might think, sometimes get the impression that it's a full-time job and that you have an office here. Well, that's not true. This is beyond your regular daily routines, and the time that you spend fulfilling your duties is often much beyond just the schools, in the community, when you're at the grocery store, people are talking to you, or with your neighbors, and you're dedicated because you want to hear from the citizens, from the students, and all the different events to support the students. And so, you know, we just really appreciate that time and energy that you've put in to support our community. I, you know, our board trustees understand that Dearborn Public Schools are part of a bigger Dearborn community, and being part of a community means being involved in projects that extend beyond the classroom. Our schools and our students have a 60-year history of being involved in keeping our city looking great and being good stewards for the environment. This year, in keeping with that trend, the district will be installing water filling stations, and Mr. Gruzinski's got that underway, in all of our schools as a way to cut down on the use of disposal plastic water bottles. As a small token of our appreciation and to once again show our appreciation for the board that leads by example, paperless, or reduction in paper, there's still a little bit with the electronic, we have for each of you, and I'm gonna pull it out here, a Students First water bottle, refillable, that you will take and refill, so starting next meeting, we're gonna, these are not gonna be, it's gonna be the refillable bottles.
So we're gonna hear a lot of clinking.
Yes, well, and, yeah, so if you're, you know, on the bike or something, these are coming handy. And we have this, this bag for you, and there's some other goodies in there, but we also have a certificate of appreciation, so I am gonna go around and hand these out to each of you. I could have put them at your place, but I wanted to personally hand them out to each of you, so let me start over here. You deserve that extra time that it takes to do that.
Are you gonna say, and you get a water bottle, and you get a water bottle?
Okay, Mary, President.
Thank you so much.
President Petlicoff, may I make a comment while Dr. Maliko is walking around? I remember reading some time ago on, like, a City of Dearborn, I don't know, a blog or something. It wasn't the city's blog, but it was some kind of a internet site.
A neighborhood blog.
Yeah, one of those, but there were people that were going back and forth about the board members and whether we got salaries and health benefits, and I'd like to say that we do not. People don't understand, we get a stipend for meetings, but we are not employees of the district. So I just want people to understand that.
And by law, we can't be paid through the college act.
Right, right, so that's, yeah.
No stipend there.
Yeah. If I might comment also, I thought about doing this later, but I had someone ask me recently whether I resigned from the board, and I still have people that are confused about the seat that I'm in, is a two-year seat, so I would like to tell people, I resigned from one seat, and somebody said to me, why did you resign? You just got elected. And I had to tell them, you know, it's been on media, so it was resigning from one seat to take another seat. It's a little complicated, but I'm here.
So the rules were followed.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Tris. I'd ask that we all show our appreciation of the board, our outstanding board of education.
All right, next item is acknowledgement of donations.
Madam President, Dr. Maliko, members of the board, I'm here today to discuss the donations to the school district. The first one, there's 13 of them, so the first one is donation of $524.70 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for vocabulary assessment. A donation of $131.94 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for CD players with headphones. Number three, a donation of $885 has been offered to Nolan Elementary by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a rack to hold music equipment. A donation of $1,655 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for books and support writing program. A donation of $260 has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for awards for the super tournament. A donation of $70.20 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a subscription for vocabulary. A donation of $500 has been offered to STEM Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for art supplies. A donation of $1,442 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to use for BPA registration, Business Professionals of America. A grant of $824 has been offered at Etzel Ford High School by Toledo Community Foundation to be used to cover transportation costs for a field trip. A donation of a 2002 Chevrolet Blazer has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Carolyn Allen to be used for a learning tool in the auto shop. A donation of $200 has been offered to Solana Intermediate by Dr. Colleen Mead Ripper to be used towards electronic marquee. A donation of $70, $25 Kroger gift cards has been offered to Long Elementary School by Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks to be used for families that are in need of food. A donation of five-year fully-assembled motor scools, 14 fully-assembled engine and transition assemblies, and eight crates of miscellaneous motor scooter parts in various stages of assembly has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Ken Lepidi to be used for a learning tool in the auto shop. That concludes the donations.
Thank you.